And we'll start with roll call. I'm Shawn Wilson, Board Chair, and we'll start to the left.
Good evening, Patty McCoy. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's Out at Night. Very excited.
Woo! So, good evening and happy Tuesday. My name is LaRonda Chastain. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anupam Chudsidhu. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Keough. I got to see the audit on Thursday before this, so I'm doubly excited tonight. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Dr. Merritt?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistants and my assistant, Miss Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to capture our minutes for our public as we move forward. And I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and welcome.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Kurt Tuskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm WPOs. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer.
Good evening. Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
All righty, please join me with further pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is action item 23-10-20, Adoption of Agenda, Approval of Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item number 23-10-20.
Second.
Fantastic. It was moved by Members Sedu, seconded by Vice President Chastain. Dr. Merritt, can you walk us through?
Yes, President Wilson. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new champions for your consideration, as well as the resignation and retirements of some employees and tenure recommendations from some of our teaching employees. We have the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on October the 11th, 2022, and then we have the final reading of the following policies. Policy 6110, that's grant funds. Policy 6325.01, equity in purchasing and contracting responsible contractors. We have policy 7217, weapons-free school zone, and policy 7250, that's naming new facilities, renaming existing facilities.
Perfect. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes 6-0. Let's see, we are on to new hires, leaves, and resignations.
All right, thank you, President Wilson. So this evening, we have two new hires. I believe one person is here and one person may be absent. Alisa Meyer, are you here? Oh, please stand up so that we can see you. So Alisa comes to us this evening. She will be an art teacher at Liberty. She has her BA from Eastern Michigan University and her MA from Wayne State University. Welcome.
Awesome. Nice.
And then we have Kevin Nay. I don't believe he was going to be able to make it. Nonetheless, he will be a resource broom teacher at Holthing. He has his BA from Sienna Heights College and his MA from Wayne State University.
Nice.
And then, also this evening, we have four teachers who are up for tenure. So I just want to read a brief statement for each of their, from each of their administrators regarding them. We have Heather Pritzblousky. I think I got that right. So her principal, Carolyn Washington, writes, "Heather is a dedicated educator who goes over and beyond expectations. She is an advocate for all students, specifically those who are learning to navigate the English language. Watching Heather interact with the students in her classroom reflects warmth, genuine care, and respect. Her students are engaged and on task. Thank you, Heather, for being a member of the Farron community." Then we have Kristin Incarnati. Kristin, April writes about Kristin, "I highly recommend Kristin Incarnati for tenure teacher. Ms. Incarnati is a great teacher who transforms dots in elementary school every day. Kristin is a source of inspiration for staff, students, and the community. It is her charm and amazing attitude that inspires everyone every day. She is everything a teacher should be. We highly respect her for her dedication to students and the community." Lisa Jasnowski. Mr. Youngglass writes, "Lisa Jasnowski has been a huge asset to East Middle School. Lisa has a passion for teaching, and it is easily seen by anyone that walks into her classroom. She has a talent for teaching the most teachers need years of experience to acquire. She loves what she does, and it shows. Her students respect the fact that she is so caring and compassionate in her style and delivery. In addition to being a great teacher, Lisa is also quick to help out around the building. She helps out with various activities such as lunch duty, bus duty, and coaching. The district should be proud to have someone like Lisa Jasnowski working with students." And then finally, we have Michelle Goocher, and Blair writes, "I highly recommend Michelle Goocher as a candidate for tenure at PCCS. Michelle is truly dedicated to Miller students, their families, and the community as a whole. Each and every day, she demonstrates a passion for learning, and the needs of the students are always the focus of her work. She consistently goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students, both academically as well as emotionally. We are lucky to have Ms. Goocher as a member of the Miller team and PCCS community." And those are our four candidates who are getting tenure tonight. And then the final thing that I have for you this evening is just one retirement announcement, and that is Jocelyn Clark, who is a supervisor of special education, and she's going to be retiring effective November 30th of 2022, so we wish her well.
All right. So now on to celebrating success, and we're actually going to call an audible on this. We have a little trickery going on with the agenda. So we have a very special recognition tonight for our superintendent, Dr. Merritt, and I'd ask Nick Brandon to introduce our guest.
This is not easy for a boss who hates surprises. So, boss, forgive me. We have had a slight change to our agenda this evening. For the celebrating success section of the agenda, we will still be very much celebrating success. We are so honored to have so many special guests with us. And at this time, it is a true honor to welcome Dr. Serena Shivers, the MAS A, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Deputy Executive Director, who has a special announcement to share with us this evening.
I can hardly contain my excitement. Okay, I'm going to try to do this. First, there are other people besides me that I would like to introduce. First, Dr. Sue Carnell, who is the Chief Deputy Superintendent of the Michigan Department of Education. We also have Dr. Davida Colbert, who is the Superintendent of Wayne Risa. We have Stephen Ezekian, who is the Deputy Superintendent of Wayne Risa here with us. We have Kelly Bowe, who is the Assistant Superintendent of HR for Wayne Risa. Mike Latvis, who is the Senior Executive Director of Legislative Affairs for Wayne Risa. We have Danya Bazey, who is the last year's Superintendent of the Year, who is Superintendent in West Bloomfield. And many, many of Monica's family and friends are here. So, I would like to reintroduce myself. My name is Dr. Serena Shivers. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for Michigan Association of Superintendent and Administrators. I have a couple members of my team. They're videotaping and taking pictures, but they're here, part of the prize patrol tonight. And we are here to talk about your lovely superintendent, Dr. Monica Merritt. That doctor thing is kind of new. I'm still getting used to it. What many of you may not know, I have known and worked with Monica for many years in several different capacities. We have worked together in Washington, and I had the pleasure of sharing the table with her as part of the Wayne County Superintendents Association when I was superintendent in Redford. I'm here on behalf of our Executive Director, Tina Kerr, who is under the weather, but it was perfect for me because I cannot imagine having any other opportunity than being able to bestow upon Monica this honor tonight. She is an incredible leader, a dedicated leader. Her spirit, determination, and leadership have been the driving force for students, staff, and the entire community for a very long time. Her time here in this community, Monica has dedicated herself to building a comprehensive program of academic support with high-quality teaching for all students. This is evident by your district's amazing accomplishment, successful graduation rate, specialized learning opportunities, a historic passage of a bond, and so many other fantastic things that I could share. Dr. Merritt and this school district has also earned numerous state and national accolades, and we are about to add one more to the list. It is extreme pleasure and honor that I have the pride to announce to you all tonight that Dr. Monica Merritt has been selected as the Michigan 2023 Superintendent of the Year. Yes.
Oh, my goodness. How in the world? You're so proud.
I'm so proud of you.
Oh, my Lord. I'm good. I do not. I cannot believe that you were able to pull this off of kind of catch. When am I ever at a loss for her?
Exactly. Okay. Congratulations, my friend. I mean, this is just such an honor and pride for so many different reasons, but guess what? As an African-American woman, I get to congratulate another African-American woman for being a Superintendent of the Year.
Thank you. Oh, my Lord, Lord, Lord.
It's not my turn yet. And how many times have we seen anybody get to boss Monica Merritt or other?
So, I would like to say, first, I love for you to hold your own bouquet because you're a superintendent of the Year. Oh, my goodness. So, Dr. Monica Merritt, first of all, good evening to the Board of Education. It is an honor to be here. My name is Davida Colbert, and I'm the Superintendent of Wayne Risa. We are so excited in Wayne County to have our own Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Monica Merritt, who now holds the Bird of Paradise bouquet that is bigger than I am. That is on behalf of the love that we have for her. But if you know, Bird of Paradise represents faithfulness, love, and thoughtfulness. Monica Merritt has been nothing but faithful to the Plymouth Canton Community School community, to the students, to the families, to the staff, to this entire community. She demonstrates nothing but love. She is kind. She is good. She has an amazing heart. She is none other than our one, our only, our favorite. She is thoughtful in everything that she does. She does not sacrifice her loving family, her husband, and her children, but they do know that she spends countless hours on behalf of children in this community, although she loves them dearly. I am, I am humbled to stand here to say that we are very excited. This does not come by chance. This is not scramble. It isn't a lottery, some number pulled out of a hat. This is an honor and achievement. It's about the work. She is a leader of learning. She is one that has professionalism like none other. Her civic involvement goes beyond. She is a board member for the Metro Bureau. She is an executive board member for the K-12 Alliance on behalf of children. She also serves on the MAS A Professional Growth and Leadership Committee. She is truly, she's a member of, I'll just say it, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where she serves as an amazing leader and community person on behalf, again, of education and scholarship. What I tell you is that she is more than a winner. Her heart is golden. She is most deserving of this honor, and for that, we are proud, proud of Dr. Monica Merritt. Congratulations.
Okay, before I turn over the mic to Monica, I just have a few more things that I want you to be aware of. She will be honored at our Midwinter Conference in Kalamazoo. Plymouth Canton Schools will receive $1,000 student scholarship for this year's award sponsor from Michigan Virtual. In addition to being the statewide winner, Monica now is a candidate for the National Superintendent of the Year. She will have an opportunity to meet and learn with other counterparts from across the country. We are tremendously proud of you, but I want to read just a couple of quotes that were a part of this evening. Superintendent Merritt is a special one-of-a-kind leader. She is devoted, hardworking, and gracious. She earns respect and admiration of anyone that crosses her path. Having a front-row seat to the Superintendent Merritt's office throughout the challenging years of the pandemic, I learned so much about dedication, diplomacy, and what skills are required to successfully lead a large district through difficult times. Another quote reads, "Despite the pressure and never-ending responsibilities of her role, she still has a booming infectious laugh that makes anyone within earshot smile. Dr. Merritt's father, Coach Herman Boone, whose life story was portrayed in the movie Remember the Titans, set an example of inclusion, equity, and strength in action, traits which she inherited and carries on to the next generation." And finally, "Under the leadership, our staff, under her leadership, our staff has supported students as they endured not only the global pandemic, but also national, state, and local turmoil. Maintaining the focus on what is best for students at all times, Monica has helped ensure that all students in this community were supported and cared for during the tumultuous times while consistently maintaining a focus on educational excellence." Congratulations, Monica.
My goodness, I don't even know how to start. But ironically, right now, I've been focused on gratitude and thankfulness and expressing every day how thankful we are, first, for the opportunity to lead and support children because there's no greater profession, and this work that we do changes lives. And we've gone through incredibly difficult couple of years, but we were able to keep our focus on doing what's right for kids. So as I stand here right now, still trying to process what had happened, as Nick shared, that's number one rule. I do not like surprises. So I cannot even wrap my mind around how this is taking place. To my wonderful husband of 24 years, we just celebrated our anniversary, and I had to miss it because I said, "It's the NHS. I have to be there for the kids." They pushed me out. "I'll meet you for dinner," but I had to be there for the kids, who has been my rock. We met at 19 years old and has been in my life. We've grown up together, encouraging me in my ear all the time when I just say, "Keep going, keep doing. The gift is not yours. You've been put your vessel. Make sure to move forward." I thank you, my children. Mackenzie and Miles, products of Plymouth Canton Community Schools, 2018 graduates. When I say, "Darrin and I moved to this community recognizing the program and the strength of Plymouth Canton," and as any parent saying, "We want the best for our two babies," and we delivered on that promise. So it's not speak when I say we treat every child like our own because every decision that we made impacted my own, too. Miles now is a senior at Michigan State. Mackenzie has graduated and is proudly representing our goals program right now, and she is soaring. She is the epitome of learn, prepare, and thrive. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your support. My friends, my families, I'm seeing everybody come to the drawing room. I saw Kelly. I looked up like, "What is Kelly doing here? What is going on?" I started to get a little nervous. Anytime that I have doubt, I'm always, "You are there. You are my village." And I use that term, "always." Everyone in the district knows it takes a village, and you are my village. You are who holds me up, and I appreciate you. This is not an award for Monica Merritt. This is a representation of Plymouth Canton. I'm looking across at you, my heart. Diane, my absolute rock in this place. She's here as late as I am and working through and sounding words and encouragement to just keep it going and keep the focus on our kids, right? If everything and all the craziness, it's about students and keep doing and keep letting that light shine and making that difference. And I just appreciate you, my entire core team. If I'm allowed to do this at this time, when I say that this is all of our award, we were just talking this morning and how grateful I am for just incredibly skilled experts in each of their field, and they've come together as a part of this team to carry out the mission and vision of our school district and do whatever it takes to support learning for students, keeping that focus. And I couldn't do it without you. Extend that to this incredible Board of Education. Day one, your lens and your focus is on equity and making sure that every student has what they need to be successful. So if somebody sets that goal, what a pleasure it is to live in that mission and that charge to make sure that every resource, our curriculum, everything is focused at getting us to that goal. And we are not there. We have so much work to do, but if I tell you right now, I am so inspired by that possibility of what is to come. We just talked about this this morning. This is the beginning of, the end will be a legacy of excellence for our students here in Plymouth Canton. We supply a world-class education, getting this recognition for that. I'm probably rambling at this time, but I think that that's the key message that goes forward, that it takes a village to take care and give kids the world-class experience that they need. The entire team of our teachers, we call them the treasure trove of talent because they're so talented. We have 1,100 teachers in this district. Our support staff, I'm looking at Mary over there, started with my baby at Smith Elementary School and still here working and supporting students as a paraprofessional. Our secretaries, I don't want to miss anyone, but every single person that touches and supports the achievement. This, this award, this is, this is us. This is us. And so as we continue to share our message, my mouth is dry. As we continue, as we continue to move forward in this work that we're doing on behalf of kids, we don't do this for recognition. We do this because this is the right thing to do. There's no other, there's no other way, right? This is our mission. And so to have this recognition external is just such validation for the work that we must continue. And because right now, I have to go there with my father, Coach Boone. My father, raising us, he would get a conversation every morning, "If you don't wake up today planning on making a difference in everybody's life, somebody's life, then carry your butt back to bed." That was his, his statement. "Are you prepared?" And so growing up, my sisters and I knew that our life, our life's work had to be dedicated to making a difference. And having the ability with this incredible team to change lives and make a difference here in Plymouth Canton has been an honor. You'll hear me say, "It has been like catching lightning in a bottle." I got that from my friend here that first told me many years ago, catching lightning in a bottle. Who gets these opportunities? So I will bring this to a close right now. I'm still just, I can't believe that we are here, but I know that our students deserve this recognition, our staff, and if I can be the vessel to deliver it, I accept it this evening. So, thank you. And I think that, also, when we talk about just the support here with Wayne Risa, Dr. Colbert, with Steve Ezekian, Kelly, Mike Latvis, when I truly tell you, the Sue Carnell, the mentors that are in this room that have really helped, as I stepped into this seat, and I'm glad I'm going to keep talking, but just one more time, just saying, "Hey, during this time, I'll stand in the gap. I'll help you out to figure it out." And now, seven years later, here, so many times early on saying, "Hey, how do you do? I have this situation." And without hesitation, always being there to help grow, mold, encourage, hold me up. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Together, let's applaud.
If I could, if I could ask the Board President if we could just, like, take a 10-minute recess so Monica has a chance to talk to her families and take a breath and all that, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that. And also, if we could get the board with Monica for a photo, that would be fantastic. All right, so, once again, just want to congratulate Dr. Merritt on that prestigious award. So for the President's Report, just two items. First, really excited that we have our very own Superintendent of the Year. That's a big President Report piece. But, but honor, you know, honestly, this, you know, being in education over the last couple of years, you know, has to have been one of the hardest jobs. And so, you know, for you to receive this recognition, I think speaks volumes to the work that you've done, not just the last couple of years, but for the last seven years. And so definitely on the, on behalf of the board, we just want to give you our deepest gratitude for all your hard work.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right. The second piece for the President's Report, I kept it light, knowing that this was, was here, that this was happening. But I do want to recognize, we have an election, school board election coming up in the next couple of weeks. Very important. Hopefully, everyone is registered to vote and will get out. And I know we have a few candidates in the, in the audience, so I just would like them to stand up and give us their names so we can recognize them.
Just Judy. Look at her.
Or a candidate.
I know who she is.
All right.
It's not just two candidates. It's not just one candidate. There's got some candidates up here, too.
And we have some candidates up here. So, the name, please?
Judy Westra.
Judy Westra. And any candidates sitting amongst this group?
Patty McCoy. LaRonda Chastain.
LaRonda Chastain, thank you.
And Anupam Chudsidhu.
Fantastic. Well, I just wanted to call that out. Once again, school board is a super-important position, a super-important role in the community, and so I appreciate those who have showed up tonight. Thank you. All right, on to SPA Committee Report. So we'll start with SPA with Member Secretary Sedu.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we do have a meeting coming up on November 2nd, Wednesday at 5:00 PM in this room. I hope you all can join us.
All right, on to Policy with Member McCoy.
So we actually met tonight at 5:30 and had a citizen who came to the meeting, so thank you. And we talked about out-of-country field trips, which we will continue to discuss, school visitors, and then we discussed a plan to make sure that our policies are reviewed on a regular basis because some of them haven't been reviewed for quite a while. So we did discuss that. We are still going to continue to discuss that. Some of them, of course, don't need revision. They just need to have eyes on them every now and then. But we had a kind of a shorter meeting, and our next meeting is November 22nd, 2022, down the Collaboration Room, which is way to the end of this aisle. Everybody is, of course, welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to Student Voice in Action Committee. We had a meeting yesterday. Our next meeting will be November 15th, and I believe we have a representative from SVA, Josh, if you'd like to.
Zach.
And Zach, to come and give, give us an update.
Congratulations, Dr. Merritt. Hello, everybody. My name is Josh Patterson. I'm a freshman at Plymouth.
Hello, my name is Zach Patterson. I'm in 7th grade, Virtual Academy student. SVA has been very busy lately.
We have worked on reviewing the applications and are hoping to get the final candidates decided and informed by November 1st.
We are grateful for all applicants who took the time to apply in both middle and high school.
We are going to be at the PCSEP Community Open House. We encourage anyone in the PCCS community to attend to see the great work of our committee as well as the other school activities.
Thanks for listening.
I would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Merritt, the Board of Education, Nick Brandon, and everyone else who has helped us learn, prepare, and thrive.
Fantastic. Thank you, Josh. Josh, you're getting good at this. You're getting good at this, Josh. Yeah, let me say, you know, we had 68 applications for SVA. We, our goal was 40, and so we surpassed that, you know, significantly, and we had a long meeting yesterday as we-
Some of them, of course, don't need revision, they just need to have eyes on them every now and then. But we had a kind of a shorter meeting and our next meeting is November 22nd, 2022, down the collaboration room, which is way to the end of this aisle. Everybody is, of course, welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to Student Voice in Action Committee. We had a meeting yesterday. Our next meeting will be November 15th. And I believe we have a representative from SVA, Josh, if you'd like to.
Zach.
And Zach to come and give, give us an update.
Congratulations, Dr. Merritt. Hello, everybody. My name is Josh Patterson, I'm a freshman at Plymouth.
Hello, my name is Zach Patterson, I'm in 7th grade Virtual Academy student. SVA has been very busy lately.
We have worked on reviewing the applications and are hoping to get the final candidates decided and informed by November 1st.
We are grateful for all applicants who took the time to apply in both middle and high school.
We are going to be at the PSEP Community Open House. We encourage anyone in the PCCS community to attend to see the great work of our committee as well as the other school activities.
Thanks for listening.
I would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Merritt, the Board of Education, Nick Brandon, and everyone else who has helped us learn, prepare, and thrive.
Thank you, Josh. Josh, you're getting good at this. Yeah, let me say, you know, we had 68 applications for SVA. We, our goal was 40. And so we surpassed that, you know, significantly. And we had a long meeting yesterday as we look at how we're gonna, you know, whittle down those numbers and just really good discussion. So I think overall, it's, it's been a great learning for the, for the students, it's been a great learning for the Board of Education. I think Dr. Merritt can kind of speak to that, that the students have taken this super serious, they continue to work hard at it, and I think it's going to be outstanding committee. So I want to thank Josh for, for his, and Zach for, for their continued leadership and all the SVA members who have, who have really stood this committee up. All right, on to finance operations with Attorney Kehoe.
Originally, we thought this was going to be the most exciting meeting because of the audit report that we're getting here this evening, but we've just gotten school. At our last FNO meeting on Thursday, we were able to keep that meeting just to ourselves and just be able to review the, the audited financials and the great clean opinion that we're gonna have. We'll be able to share that with you that are here this evening. We also talked about some radio purchases that we're doing, which will also be on the agenda this evening. Our next FNO meeting is Thursday, November 3rd at 5:00 PM at this room, and we welcome the community to attend.
Thank you, Member Kehoe. On to administrative reports with superintendent reports.
And of course, out of all night. So let me get myself together, which I had never missed an opportunity to brag about this incredible district, but this evening, I actually needed to use the report to just talk about some assurances that we need to do for our community. So I'll definitely circle back, but right now, I'm just gonna brag that, again, this is an absolute amazing community from every person that is involved. That just makes our strength and I'm, I'm just, I'm overjoyed and never had a loss for words. And I, and I, and I'm, I just even. So I'm gonna try to get it together, my amazing team. If I mess up, then help me out along the way. All right, so I'm gonna throw a PowerPoint up here, not a PowerPoint, but a couple of slides, just so that we could follow along. What I'm doing this night is just giving an update on some additional federal funds that we have an opportunity to apply for as a district. This is called Section 98(c). And when you listen or look to the 98(c) funds, these are state and federal funds that have been appropriated to address learning loss. And these are continuing on with ESER funds, GEAR funds are from the governor's funds to address learning loss. So there will be an allocation of $52 million that will be, will be available to any district in the state of Michigan that applies. And based on the total number of people that apply, you'll get a distribution on a per-pupil allocation. With this, just like our 11T, our ESER funds, you have certain requirements that you have to utilize this funds and these funds for in terms of addressing learning loss or any unfinished learning caused by the pandemic. You have to, as a part of this application, pick one of the following areas. And you can look there, they're about high-quality assessments, implementing evidence-based activities, providing assistance to parents, as well as tracking students' performance in distance learning. So as you looked at this, and we've gotten a recent understanding of what this looks like, of course, we say we're going to take every opportunity to apply for any additional funding to support the learning of our students. We've chosen to focus on two areas because as we've gone through the understanding in the last few days about what is allowable, it was important to look to our, we'll flip to the next slide, our current approved plan that we have using our ESER, ESER 2 funds, our ESER 3 funds. If you recall, as we've made this significant investment with our ESERS funds, we knew that over the next couple of years, because those funds have to be used by 2024. So we said, we'll have to gather the data, what's working well, what's not, because eventually we have to make that decision to know, do we invest in general fund in this expense? So as we're thinking of these additional funds, is this a way to continue really strong evidence-based practices that we find are working for our students? So the question was, can we utilize an existing plan that we have and attach that to the application? And the answer is yes. So we're focusing on two of those four areas for a part of this application. The implementation of evidence-based activities, which are inclusive of our elementary student support specialists, our middle school deans of student support, our teachers on special assignments, we have our high school success coaches. This amazing summer academy and credit recovery that we've expanded through the course of the last couple of years, having an opportunity to continue some of that good work. And looking at our diversity, equity, and inclusion support through the hiring of our climate and culture specialists, being able to continue that work. Looking at the providing information to assist our families and parents, looking at our Office of Student and Family Engagement, which is a great office that we're able to open this year utilizing the funds and really taking a look at our family liaisons. As you know, we have family liaisons to support many of our, our students within the district. One thing that is different about our ESER 3 funds, we had an 11T, so there were only five identified, seven identified categories of students that we could allow to receive services from these federal funds. We do not have the stipulation for the 98(c). So any student that has experienced learning loss and we're looking to utilize some of these interventions, we could utilize those to support. So building that caseload, determining, you know, the metrics to see if this is successful, and then reviewing that will give us then the additional funds. Now, what is the unknown? Is it 52 million? We don't know how many districts will apply, but we definitely want to put our, our hand in the game. Now, as a part of this requirement, we had some dates that we needed to meet. And the reason that I'm talking about this this evening, we had to know later than October 30th, share with our community our planned use of funds if we are able. And it's our understanding, if you apply, then everyone will receive, but we just don't know how much that is. So we just needed to share, share at a public meeting our discussion on how we're using the funding. We have then a November 30th deadline to apply. So we'll discuss, you know, take any feedback that you may have as well, and we want to then submit our application to the state to receive these 98(c) funds by no later than November 30th. By July 14th, so that gives us a full year, that's really the accountability piece. So we need to be able to complete our required reports, submit those to the MDE. MDE will then turn around and give a single report for all districts that are participating to the state, and that deadline is by August 15th, 2023. And so just sharing this evening to be able to have that assurance that we are applying for this application, that we are using it to address these two areas that are included within the eligible areas, and will then, as a part of this requirement, also post this to our website. So I will upload this just as a part, we have that on our agenda right now. So we will have that evidence of this conversation happening. So I'll pause right here and take any questions that you may have.
Start to the right.
Thank you for the, the brief overview. I, you know, I appreciate building on a previous plan. I think that's a really thoughtful way to kind of lean in and utilize this funding for students who fall outside of the 11T category. So I think that's, that was really thoughtful. I guess I don't really, in terms of questions, I see the deadline for applying and the, and the reports, do we know when the funds would potentially become available to the district? I'm not sure if you highlighted that or not.
Based on the November 30th deadline to apply, they probably wouldn't be awarded until December and maybe not available till January is what I'm thinking.
This would actually be beyond that because it would probably be on the other side in 2023 because I remember asking the question, for example, can we include summer school the upcoming year? So they said every expense would have to be recorded through June 30th, and then that would be submitted. Now, we do have the opportunity, I'll use the language, charge back. So summer school that just, that we just went through, depending on the amount of money, we could charge back, which would also give some relief to the general fund. So if we look at things that we've had to cover under the general fund that weren't eligible for 11T that are a part of these, this plan, we could also do that charge back. So it would probably be the following November, December, but we'll find out the exact answer.
Thank you.
What's the basis that the state is using for granting these funds? Is it, you know, they're taking in all these applications? Because I assume that more people are going to request funds than there's resources available. Do you have any sense for how they're being allocated?
Not a sense, but just more in line of the pandemic and its impact on so many. And so with the 11T having the restrictions, trying to really extend that, I think most recently you just saw the report of Michigan and how across the state, we were impacted from pandemic, pandemic in terms of, in terms of learning loss. And then looking at NAEP scores across the nation. So I think it's again, having an opportunity of current money that is available with this funding source, how do we continue to push that back into the schools? And, and with evidence-based activities, try to move the needle for students that may need additional support.
So I just was more asking about how to, how is, is it determined on a per-pupil basis?
Per pupil.
Okay, so it would be an even funding for everybody that applied?
That is correct.
So it's not a function of there's a greater need in one district or another? It's, it's a function of the number of students that you have in the, in the district?
That is correct.
And it's a broad-based thing, it's not based upon a specific categorical like it is for the 11T?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Could you go back to the slide again where you had talked about addressing two of the areas and talking more about how you plan to measure the impact of that work, given that it's such a tight timeline?
Yes. And so that was one of the reasons that we thought it's better to go with our current approved plan from the MDE. And we've already had those metrics in place in the system to collect. So when we have our student support specialists, our deans, they're currently assigned a caseload of students, and they're working with the students using our NWEA assessments, the academic portfolio of the student, attendance, discipline, social, emotional needs. We have this information, we utilize Panorama to store in our MyStar, so that's really tracking the progress on these individual goals for students. So that is the current plan that's in place. There's the oversight from our level leaders, our directors. And so at the end of the year, they review those. They also are able to support our teachers within the classroom for tier-one instruction. So if you know in particular that a student is struggling on, on, on one area, they're able to provide that academic support there and then you, tracking the progress. Are they able to master those skills where students may be struggling? The same thing with our TOSSAs. You know, they're currently able to, to work directly with individual students with that caseload, looking at all of those points, track that progress and is this intervention helping? So this is already in place, we're currently collecting that information on the students that are receiving support. We could then expand the support for other students that may not have been eligible based on 11T, utilizing that same model and continuing with those metrics to see. Are we moving the needle? Are we helping to, to grow in those spaces?
So does the support, the increase in support mean additional staff?
We are not looking at additional staff right now. So the idea is, we're looking is the staff that we have, so we currently, for example, have TOSSAs, one in every building. We have five deans, so one at each middle school. I think we currently have eight elementary success coaches. So the idea is, we knew going into this, we only had two years to utilize these services. So if we're able to free up from general fund, it gives us that ability to continue this intervention without having to cut something else. So the idea is not to expand, but it wouldn't prevent us from if we are able to say, hey, this is working and let's look at how we want to reallocate some funds. But our thought is with 52 million across 800-plus LEAs in.
Thirty-seven dollars a student.
If everyone applied. So we want to be realistic and not invest in additional people, but be able to continue that support for longer than right now we anticipate it.
So last question is, in terms of measuring the impact, can we expect some sort of a report? Spring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Just trying to get that into timeline here.
The answer is yes. And also, just to kind of tag onto something Dr. Merritt said, was the elementary student support specialist and the middle school deans of student support were funded out of the first round of ESER funds. Those funds were expensed, and right now they would be tagged to the general fund. So this also allows us to free up some of that general fund money to look ahead to the funding cliff. And as we look ahead to the funding cliff, that then frees up in the ability to potentially move, keep these interventions longer. This year, they're tagged to general fund because the ESER funds, ESER 1 and 2, whatever.
ARP.
Yes, ESER ARP, there's like 16 different ESER like subcategories, 23B, A, B, and C, all these things. But as those funds roll off, then this allows us to use the funds for the things that we've already vetted through the MDE, we're already providing, you know, getting data on those types of things.
And that's allowable, so you're not.
Yes, these are already approved expenses. So that's one of the defining factors is you don't have to then go through another approval round.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, no questions for me?
You all kind of asked them all. I just have one point of clarification, Dr. Merritt. I know it's per-pupil funding, and so how can I make it a simple question? Does it have to be for the number of students who have demonstrated learning loss? So not those seven categories, but any student that has demonstrated learning loss can benefit with this additional funding?
That's correct.
And so because we're already capturing that in Panorama, it's easy for us to identify them and easily link them into services and interventions?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
One piece, I heard about the report, are we gonna get a report here? And as Israel said, yes, that is the requirement of the report that also goes to the MDE. So those are really the three pieces that we need. One, public meeting to share how we're using the funds. Two is a link to the website so that that's out there on our website. And three is we're looking at the metrics, how are we measuring? And then we have to submit that report to MDE. And again, so we will share that report here with board and our community. We then share with the state and they'll put a single report from everyone who has participated to put to the state legislature by that November, I forget that date, August 8th, yeah, August 8th.
Member McCoy?
I don't have any questions. They all got answered, but I do appreciate the idea of really looking at things that are affirmative and then continuing those things with some real metrics.
I also appreciate the report being visual as well, so both visual and so the community could see it and hear it. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on to another assurance, and this is gonna be quick. This is our ECOOL assurance. So that is for those that remember, this is our Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. Early on with the beginning of the pandemic, we had to create, we were required to create Extended Continuity of Learning Plans. Two years ago, you as a board had to approve, actually take action to approve that plan. Last year, we still had to talk about the plan, and that means, what is our delivery of instruction? What is the model that we use in our district to deliver instruction? We've just learned that as long as we are still utilizing federal funds, there's a requirement at least every six months to share with community our Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. No action is needed, but we just need to, in a public place, share how we're delivering instruction and also then post this to our website. So tonight, we'll share for the 22, 23 school year, we are offering in-person instruction, and this is for every one of our programs from early childhood, preschool, kindergarten through 12th grade, and post-secondary. We also are continuing with our virtual option for all students to only shift this year from what we've had the previous two years. In our Virtual Academy, we are only providing virtual options for first through 12th grade. And this was after much, much research and the, the recommendation for kindergarten, we need to have, have our kindergarteners here in person and not having that level of success virtually. So we are sharing this this evening. We will come back then again in, let's say around April, because every six months, to once again affirm that we are offering these two modes of instruction in Plymouth Canton and continue, continue to have this posted on our website.
Does the report include number of students? No?
No, it's just the how we're delivering instruction, what's available. And that is it for me this evening.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. All right, on to the moment someone has been waiting for.
Guys are laughing, this is an important moment.
This is an important moment. Like, we joke about it, but this really is a very important presentation and really excited, so I'm gonna turn it over to WPS.
Thank you very much. With me this evening is partner at Plant Moran, Joff Higgins, and a manager, I'm gonna, I always remember her maiden name, not her married name, so I probably wrote it down, Allison Arsenal, who's here this evening to give us the audit report. Thank you so much, Joff and Allison, appreciate it. And Devon Kling is here as well, our Director of Finance and Accounting.
Well, thank you and good evening. And first off, of course, congratulations to Dr. Merritt, that really is a tremendous achievement. And as was mentioned, we're here tonight to present the second most exciting bit of news of the evening, the result. And as was mentioned, we're here tonight to present the second most exciting bit of news of the evening, the results of the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2022. So there's three documents that come out of our audit process. There's a financial report with supplemental information, which represents the district's audit financial statements. There's a separate federal awards supplemental information, which represents our separate audit of the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, there's a report to the Board of the Academy, which provides information and background on the audit process itself. So these first few slides really just get into that audit process. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but the key thing is that it was a very smooth audit process. There was no significant findings or issues, no disagreements with management, no reportable internal control findings, you know, no identified fraud or illegal acts. A very clean overall audit process. And then when we get to the audit itself, so again, it's important to remember that our job as the district's independent auditors is to provide our opinion on the district's financial statements. So we perform our audit in accordance with auditing standards, generally accepted auditing practices. And I'm happy to report here tonight that it was, in addition to being a very clean audit process, the audit report, we've also issued what's called an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. That would be the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can place on a set of financial statements. So again, an overall, overall clean report. And Allison is going to walk us through some of the highlights for the financials for the year ended, again, June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. So as Dr. Merritt talked about in her presentation, the district did receive a significant influx of emergency relief and response federal grant funding over the past few years. This graph shows what the district has received and what has been spent as of June 30th, 2022. The greenish line bar shows what was awarded. The orange shows what was expended through June 30th, 2022. And then the blue line shows the awards that were awarded in July 2022. So you'll see the spend for the 2023 school year. We just want to point out that this funding has a finite period of time in which it will be a revenue source for the district. And it also has restrictions on how the funds can be used. So while it is a significant benefit to receive these funds, the utilization of these requires a deliberate plan. And as you mentioned, the district has done that. So the next slide just shows an overview of the governmental funds as of June 30th, 2022. This would be the balance sheet, so as of June 30th, 2022. You can see the general fund had a total fund balance of about 40.9 million. And the total fund balance was 129.6 million as of June 30th. The next slide shows the combined statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance of the governmental funds through the year ended June 30th, 2022. As you can see, the total funds had a change in fund balance, which was a decrease of 33.4 million, most of which relates to the continued spending on capital projects, so the use of your bond money. So this slide, the next two slides will just focus specifically on the general fund. This slide shows general fund revenue, which totaled about 185.6 million. As you can see from a funding perspective, the district is completely dependent on state and local dollars. As you can see with the foundation allowance, which would be based on your student count. We have the MIPSers cost support revenue, property taxes, and enhancement millage money make about approximately 97% of district revenue. So this slide takes a historical look at your per pupil foundation allowance, starting with the 12, 13 school year through the current 21, 22 school year. The inflation line, which is based on the average inflation over a 10-year period, so it shows 2.07%. But as you know, if you were looking over the past year or two, it would be much higher than that. But this shows that the district's per pupil funding has not kept up with the rate of inflation. If your per pupil funding increased by the rate of inflation, you would be receiving about 10.8,000 per pupil rather than the 8,700 you've received. This slide shows student enrollment, and as you know, student enrollment is one of the main drivers of revenue for the district. This slide shows your blended FTE count for the past five school years and the FTE count for the current school year. As you can see, the slight decrease in FTEs is budgeted for 22, 23. And this was based on the budget that was adopted in June 2022 for the 22, 23 school year. The next slide shows total revenue from the enhancement millage, which totals about 7 million each year. We do want to point out, beginning in 2023, so this school year, the district will receive less funding from the enhancement millage due to the charter schools now being included in the regulations. And then the top part, the purplish-blue color, is delinquent amounts. So that would be in 2022, you received about 446,000 related to past years. The next slide shows the general fund expenditures by function. As you can see, majority of expenses relate to instruction and instructional support, which would be teachers' salary and benefits, classroom supplies, parapros, et cetera. So as you can see, most of your spending is going towards instruction. The next largest slide is the general business and central support. This would include salary and benefits for business office staff, salaries and benefits for all school building principals and administrative staff. Also included here is taxes, insurance, data processing fees, warranties for your student Chromebooks, legal and audit fees, and the Wayne Risa Graduation Alliance, which helps students find alternative pathways to graduating. And then the third largest, which is ops and maintenance, that largest expense would be utility fees for the buildings. So this also shows expenditures but by object rather than function. So being a service-driven organization, the mass majority of the district's operating resources are spent on personnel-related expenditures. So salaries, retirement costs, and other fringe benefits accounted for about 84% of general fund spending. Purchased services, which is mainly related to outsourced personnel for transportation and custodial services, total about 10%. And then the remaining expenses related to supplies, capital outlay, and then debt service costs. Your supplies would include items such as fuel for buses, textbooks, and utilities. So everyone's favorite slide is your state mandated retirement expense, which shows the expense from 28 to 2022. The orange portion at the top represents the portion of retirement expense offset by the UAAL stabilization funding. These stabilization payments are received from the state and then are required to be immediately remitted to the Office of Retirement Services, or ORS. The total retirement rate for the district has increased from about 17% in 2010 to over 27% in 2022. These expenses totaling 48 million for 2022 are related to retirement funding for people who have already retired. And it doesn't include retirement expense for current employees. And just to reiterate, these are state-mandated expenditures. So the last slide looks at a five-year history of fund balance. The green bar represents total fund balance, and the orange bar represents the portion of fund balance that is considered unassigned. The blue line on the 2022 graph represents the MSBO, or Michigan School Business Officials' recommended benchmark of a fund balance at 15%. And then the red line shows the early warning line, which would be 5% of 2022 revenue. So it's a little bit different of a calculation, but if you are under 5%, it's called the early warning line. You can see the district had 21.5% fund balance as of June 30th, 2022, and then 18.4 of unassigned fund balance. As of June 30th, 2021, the state average fund balance was around 19.5%. So you can see Plymouth Canton's fund balance is right in line with the state average. We don't have the 2022 numbers yet as districts are still reporting, but we expect it to be right in line with Plymouth's fund balance percentage. So thank you. We enjoy the audit process. We thank Debbie and Devon for all their help during the audit. It's always a pleasure working with them, so we thank you for your time today. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Fantastic, thank you. We'll start with Member McCoy with any questions.
So that was lovely, thank you. It's a very exciting night, especially the clean opinion is fantastic. So on slide 15, where it was talking about the MIPSers money. Just to remind the community that, because often we hear that that money is kind of a, that the state gives us, but then you have to pay right back, is like an S, but that's, it comes in and then it goes right out. Like, we don't get any benefit from that. So that's often touted as additional funding, but it's, it's really not. And do you know, how much will the Risa Enhancement Millage, how much less funding are we going to get?
I'll take that one. Wayne Risa and Steve Vazekian's office has estimated it will be between 20 and 25% less. So in our case, it'll go from about $7 million or a little bit over $7 million to about 5.2.
Okay, and that starts in 2023?
In the year we're sitting in, 22, 23, yep.
This year.
This year.
Yeah. I think that's it right now.
Vice President Chastain?
I don't have any questions, just, I just want to publicly say thank you for the work. And really to the team, this is not an easy thing. Like, people, I don't want you all to think we're joking when we say it was like the highlight of the evening. For a school district our size and the amount of really complexity and difficulty of what has to go into this, it really is an honor and for us to get a clean audit with no significant findings. And so I just want to congratulate the team and the work that went into making sure this happened. And really, the leadership daily to put us in this position. So thank you all for the work that you do every day.
Just to quickly piggyback on that, you know, the same, I mean, ultimately, when you look at the new forms of revenue that came in, all of those come with new requirements, whether it's implementation requirements, reporting requirements. So, you know, I just want to recognize the work that goes into making sure that we're implementing it with fidelity. And as we all know, as those dollars are coming fast because of COVID, sometimes those requirements are morphing. Sometimes those requirements are gaining clarity as we're actually going along the path. So to receive a clean audit is, is something that the entire district should really be proud of, but thank you for your leadership. Members, so do.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you for a great report, very thorough, and congratulations to the team.
I'd like to echo my fellow board members in thanking the team and all the work that goes into this. You know, this has been a very challenging few years, and this clean audit report is not our first. We have these on a regular basis. They happen almost all the time, at least as far as I know, they've happened every time that I've been here. And that's a function of the leadership and the work that the administration has had over those years. This is the right processes, the right procedures, all the work that goes into this makes it so that this is why we have these clean reports. And the message that we hear from our auditors is that they're easy to work with and that the team comes prepared with all the information that's necessary. So again, echo the thanks to the administration and all the teams to help with this process, as well as our auditors in being able to provide this information. Thank you. The last thing I wanted to mention, though, is that when we look at that school funding process, it's not just inflation. There's independent reviews of what's required to be able to adequately educate a student. The Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative updated their amount that they felt was necessary to provide an adequate funding last year. And it was 4,000, I'm sorry, 10,421. We don't have the funding that we need to actually do the right level of work in this district. Everybody in this district does more with less, and they've been doing great work over these past years. But ultimately, if we're going to serve our students and our community right, we need more funding to be able to address this.
Yes.
Member Christensen?
I really don't have anything to add. I wholeheartedly agree with what my fellow board members have said. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, everybody.
Thank you very much to all, but it takes a village, as my Superintendent of the Year in the State of Michigan said. And so I am no different. And so I want to thank Devon Kling, Steve LeBlanc, and the entire finance department staff, but also Beth Rail, Shontae Langford, Dr. Gibbs for earlier in her career. It takes all of us to do this work, and especially with the level of funding we're getting from the feds, it's a lot. If you look at your federal audit, it's about 28 million this year, and in years prior, it was between four and five. So it was exponential in the amount of work we had to do this year for federal programs. But I thank Plant Moran and our staff as well, thank you.
Thank you, and let me just thank Plant Moran. You know, since I've been on the board, I've always enjoyed your presentations. You do a great job of laying it out clear, you know, in a way that's clear to understand, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
All right. I also want to commend you. It was nine and a half minutes, so nice job.
All right, so action item 231021, consider approval of a resolution, annual financial audit report for fiscal year 2021, 2022, first and final read.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for the annual financial audit reports for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. This is a first and final reading, and the action item number is 231021.
Second.
All right, moved by, seconded by Member Christensen. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, resolution passes 6-0. On to action item 231022, consider approval of a resolution, security radio purchase, first and final read.
Can I go right to me? Great, thank you. Before you tonight, we have a resolution for purchase of additional radios for our buildings. If you recall, back in November of 2021, following board approval, the district placed an initial order of radios with Bearcom that upgraded our analog system to a digital platform. Unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, lithium battery shortages, and FCC licensing issues, the radios were just received in the district a couple of weeks ago. Director Meyer and myself met with Bearcom last week, and they informed us that they are able to set up and deploy the equipment that we received fairly quickly, and we anticipate getting all of those radios into the buildings as quickly as possible. One of the other things we learned is that they are trying to be proactive in the supply chain channel and have purchased additional radios as a company and have the ability to move forward with Phase 2 of our radio purchase. And they do have them on stock. And we are hopeful that you would consider a first and final reading tonight so that we could take advantage of that supply chain allotment that they have and purchase additional radios to continue to upgrade our systems.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tiskowitz?
Just some context around this, as we discussed this extensively in FNO, and this would unify the radios that we have across the district with the programming and the other things, and really well position us for being able to communicate not only within the schools, but across to our security teams and everything else that we're doing.
Perfect. Any additional questions?
And so this would complete, this is the final phase, right?
This is phase two, and we anticipate one, possibly two more, depending on the need. And some of the radios that we're able to purchase, Director Meyer's here, and he could provide all the technical aspect of it. But it'll allow us, right now, the radios will communicate within the building. And then we're looking at a larger scale where they'll be able to communicate across the district.
Across the district, okay.
And that'd be for a smaller group of radios, not, this is the, this is the day-to-day ones.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion for action item 231022?
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for security radio purchase, first and final reading, action item 231022.
Is there a second? Okay. Okay, moved by Member Keighley, seconded by Vice President Chastain. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? All right, motion passes 6-0. Now on to communication and marketing presentation with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. On a night where we celebrate so much, we're going to take some time to look at our partnerships program here at PCCS. The dynamic plan themes, goals, and strategic objectives have led us to enhanced focus on our partnership programs. Not in the context of that we should really develop a partnership program, because as we all know, we've amassed a great collection of partners that really support our, our students and our schools in so many ways. But more how we can better attract, engage, and sustain community partners to take our partnership program to a higher level and to best serve outcomes for all students, staff, and our community. Of course, the connection to the dynamic plan is through strategic goal C. There was extensive conversation about partnerships during the dynamic plan planning sessions. And I want to thank the Board of Education for making partnerships such a priority as part of the work of the dynamic plan. It's very important right off the bat to define partnerships for PCCS. This word can mean a lot of things to a lot of organizations, so nobody better to do that joining us tonight than Mr. Frank Ruggiero, our Director of Partnerships and External Affairs, who's going to talk about what partnerships mean here at PCCS. Frank?
Thank you, Nick, members of the board, Dr. Merritt. Partnerships are a vital piece of the work that we do, and as Nick mentioned, a major part of our dynamic plan. We feel in order to offer the world-class education that our community deserves and expects, partnerships need to be a major part of that work. A strong partnership program will, we believe, increase student outcomes, student and family engagement, enrollment, and equitable opportunities for all of our students. Now, we're really blessed to, to be located in the community that we're in, because we have wonderful businesses here, wonderful community organizations that really want to be a part of our district and part of educating the students here. So we have started that work, and tonight I want to mention a couple of things. This is just a snapshot, and the initial work that we're doing on partnerships, this will grow, this will be a living document, we'll continue to work on it. But it's important for you to understand tonight, as we move forward, that some of our best partners are our vendors. And I want to make sure you understand that we recognize that, but they were not included in this initial work. So the initial work just is with the community partners and corporations that we work with. And I'll turn it back to Nick to move forward.
So as we look at our partnership program, really, the, the two issues that we addressed as part of this work was, one, that we were really without a formalized structure, a formalized process to key of our partners. How many did we have? Which students and programs did they serve? What were our key contacts? Were those partnerships active or not active? So that was one of the problems that we wanted to solve through this initial work. And then, secondly, of course, we wanted the chance to identify any gaps. What gaps maybe do we have in our partnership work that we need to address to make sure that students are receiving an equitable experience when it comes to how partnerships can impact, positively impact, their outcomes? So the resources, activities, and outputs as part of this work really revolves around a partnership audit. This was a formal process that we engaged in for the last several months, not just a spreadsheet, but a true audit, a true collection of where are our partnerships, who are they serving, and how can we make them better? This instrument is a beginning, not an ending. This instrument is a way for us to better serve our students, staff, and community through partnerships, because now we know where they are and what they do. In terms of our goals, we have short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. Short-term goals, thanks to the audit, now we really are available to identify those gaps, and we'll show some of those through, through some data. We were on a reestablished partnerships that had to pause due to COVID response. We want to strengthen our relationships and mutual visibility with our partners. We do not want these relationships to be one-way. It is incredibly vital that they're two-way, and that our partners feel like they're getting just as much out of the partnership as we are here at PCCS. And of course, we want to improve our audit instrument to, to better give us data so we can set some goals. For our midterm goals, we want to create a partnership survey. We want all of our work moving forward to be two-way with our partners. A big part of that is getting their feedback. If we're going to set a goal for each one of these partnerships, which is part of our long-term goal, we need to know what they want out of it as well. This survey will allow us a convenient way to get the voice of our partnerships. Talked a lot about community voice as part of the dynamic plan as well. So this instrument will allow us to receive that voice directly, to make decisions with two-way communication, not just us asking for things. And then lastly, we want to make sure that we set measurables for each one of our partnerships that will show the success for what they mean to our district. And everything is aligned with strategic goal C in the dynamic plan. That means that these partnerships should align with student outcomes, with engagement, with enrollment, and with opportunities for all students. With that, we did create a metric. We want to increase meaningful partnerships in our district 2% each year so that by the end of this, the run of the dynamic plan, we see a 10% increase in meaningful partnerships throughout our district. With that, we'll look at some of the major findings. What we did identify is that we did have a gap in our elementary and middle school levels as part of the partnership audit. I think that our high school level with Plymouth Canton Educational Park and all the various programs there, there's a lot of partnerships that are active. We've identified that we need to see more growth in our elementary and our middle school programs. For example, in our elementary program, the innovation period that we just added. What an amazing opportunity for community partnerships, for business partnerships, to get involved in some of that innovation work. Same with our middle school program. So we're pleased with our district-wide partnerships, but the gap we identified is at the elementary and middle level, and you see that reflected in the chart we just looked at. In terms of the major findings, our partnership categories that we broke into are community partners, colleges and universities, corporate and business partnerships, and mental health and wellness. As part of the audit, we were able to come up with a data point that we have more than 200 partnerships in this district to serve our students and staff. So in terms of the conclusions and the future vision for this work, I'll bring Frank back up to discuss some of this.
Thanks again, Nick. We're really, Nick mentioned the data-driven focus of the work that we're going to do. We do see the elementary level and middle school level as a place where we really want to increase those partnerships. And we believe that the innovation period is really going to offer us some opportunities. Another thing we want to mention is that there are some partnerships on the list that are deemed inactive right now or those that we, that became inactive because of COVID. One that I always point to was we were just beginning to do some work with colleges and universities and having our middle school students visit those colleges and universities. Obviously, that stopped during COVID. That's one that we want to get going back again right away, because we feel it's really important for middle schoolers to get on a college campus long before their high school careers begin to see what that is like, so we're going to work on that as well. And Nick mentioned the survey to gather that voice, and again, a partnership is like a marriage. It's a two-way, if, if both parties aren't getting something out of it, it's not going to work. So we really want to make sure that our partners get everything, as much out of it as we do.
The last thing we want to do that's so important in partnerships, and Dr. Merritt mentioned gratitude earlier, is to say thank you to our district partners. This audit and this process brought to life that we just have an incredible group of organizations that support us so much and so selflessly and do so much for our students to help support their outcomes and to help support engagement and enrollment and the other goals of the dynamic plan. So we do want to say thank you to our partners, and for those who we have not partnered with, we look forward to welcoming more partners to our district in the future, as you saw from our goals earlier. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to any feedback or questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Great presentation. I'll, I'll just kick off with a couple of quick questions. Long-term goals, outcome goals, long-term outcome goals. You mentioned increasing meaningful partnerships. How, how do you, how do you define a meaningful partnership?
It's a great question. The one way I know that we don't define it is by us deciding what that is. And that's where the partnership survey comes in. We, we need to engage each partner through this work and make sure that we identify what it is that they want to get out of as well. Spend some time listening before we make that determination. So that really is our next step. That's why the partnership survey and creating that two-way feedback loop is really important as a next step.
And then, and then I would just go to slide, geez, what is this slide, uh, what slide is this?
Forward or backward?
Forward. One more, right there. So I love the, the category of mental health and wellness, because it really ties to, you know, one of the main priorities that we've talked about in the district, in emerging. It's always kind of been an issue, but we know coming out of COVID is going to be even more of an issue. And so I, I love that you can kind of quantify that, right, to say 31% of, of our partners fall in that category. Would love to see something similar to that around the gap, right, closing the gap, things of that nature. So what, what percentage of our partnerships are helping us to close the gaps, whatever those, you know, however we define the gap, so we can see the overlay there. But, you know, that's, that's just my feedback, but other than that, I, I think it's great. Would love to see, you know, more definition around what a meaningful partnership is, but it sounds like you're doing that through the survey, and, you know, you'll be able to more clearly define that moving along. And I think it's smart to define that in partnership with the partners. So, so I'm satisfied with that.
Excellent. Thank you. And on the mental health and wellness, I just want to shout out the work of the Department of Student and Family Engagement. I mean, what's already underway under the leadership of Dr. Vartini and Gibbs is really incredible opportunities for our community. And so we see that, that number growing for sure, the number of mental health and wellness partners, especially with the angle of mental health and wellness fair.
Fantastic.
Which was obviously a huge success.
Absolutely. With that, we'll start to the right with Member Christensen.
I really don't have any questions. I, you know, we talked a little bit about this at our FNO meeting last week, so we got a little teaser. We got to see this presentation. I guess I just want to highlight some of that conversation. You know, this audit was a great opportunity to really explore and see what our partnerships were across the district. I think maybe what we heard in our discussion was that some of that was disjointed, some of that information wasn't readily accessible to, let's say, our elementary schools, you know, some of the partnerships that were happening at the high school, for example. So having this all contained in one database is, is a really great resource for all to, to be able to tap into some of those partnerships that may have not created those connections. So I'm excited to see how this, this moves forward.
Thank you so much.
So again, we, we talked about this extensively there, and I appreciate the, the updated presentation that we had from the, the discussion. And we had a lot of conversations on what does success look like, not only from the district, but from the partner. And there's also recognition of the amount of time that goes into this work for people like Frank and everybody who's managing these partner relationships. And that we need to make sure that we're, that both the partners and the district are getting something out of these processes. And it's not the same for everybody. Sometimes it's awareness, sometimes just those partners that can touch one student, and that process can be really beneficial to us. But we need to have those measures, what does success look like? And I think that that's, this survey is the first step in that process, and I really am excited about seeing how this, this formal data gathering process and evaluation work proceeds, and recognizing that it's not a one-size-fits-all. And I really appreciate the flexibility that you've all taken in this approach of how you're going to evaluate them, because we don't want to just pigeonhole them based upon a specific partner. But, you know, really, what do, what do we each get out of that process? And so I appreciate the leadership, Frank and, and Nick in this process, and look forward to hearing more about the partners and how they impact the district and our dynamic plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great presentation. You know, community and family partnerships is really important and needed. I had the chance to attend one of the meetings, was it last week, Dr. Liz? That was coordinated with a family viewing of a movie around mental health, and there was a panel discussion. Really great work happening, and, and you can see that families are really appreciative of this work, and of course, very important, as President Wilson said. So great work is already happening in some of these categories. I do wonder about where and how you're targeting student enrollment, since I seen that at a couple of places. And that's one of the things that the board has asked about repeatedly, so I would like to know a little bit more about how or what the plan is for increasing student enrollment.
How, how would you like to see that?
Yeah, is that something we can provide?
I was going to say, we actually talked about that at the last meeting. And so what I shared at that time, I think it still is an ongoing board question. I'm going to give an update on timeline process, and then we'll come back to, that'll be a board notes, and then we'll do a presentation. Probably looking at December is what we talked about as we're moving into some decisions even around other opportunities to increase enrollment in January. So we're looking for that to come as an update in board notes and a presentation around enrollment and what we're doing.
Great. Because, you know, I saw that enrollment in a couple of places. You mentioned it. I just want to make sure that we're still, it's mentioned in these presentations. That is a huge concern for many people, and that I just don't want to miss it. I know I mentioned it last time, whether it's integrated into your next report or maybe a separate report, but that is a big piece of the strategic goal C that we outlined.
We, we talked about it extensively in the FNO committee as well.
Okay, great.
There's, there's a lot of work coming on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I think it was pretty awesome for you to be able to identify 200 partners. I would venture to say it's probably even more than 200, but the fact that, you know, the, the time that you all have taken to, to identify the 200 is great. On, I don't know the, the number of the slide, and you don't have to go to it, but how we sort of broke out community partners, colleges, universities, corporate, mental health. And then the slide before that where we had, we break out the partnership level, so district-wide, and then high school, middle, elementary. It would be really interesting from a data perspective and sort of helping drive priority setting. Like, for the high school, what percentage of those partners are community, colleges, corporate, mental health? For middle school, those same subcategories, so we see the percentage of where the partnerships are. But then to sort of categorize them out a little bit more might help, help sort of focus the priority setting. If you look at the data in that way. And then just not as a board member, but as a community member and a mom, when you can see the gaps. I mean, we all are connected as well, so I'm a part of this community, and when I do my own relationship audit, how can I bring people to the table or relationships and, and deliver those things to our elementary schools or? And so that would also help as a community. I think every community member is vested in our kids. And if we can see the gaps, then we can see ourselves in the dynamic plan. And then we can also kind of rally behind the work that's going to be happening. And so I just think that's just another way to look at the data and to get some more community buy-in. So thanks so much.
Thank you for that, Vice President Chastain. And that's the beauty of this audit, is we can drill down further into some of the data and, and find out even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my main question was on the meaningful, like what, what that, and you said you would get that again. So is there a way for the community, I mean, do they have a list of all the partnerships? Because that could be something very interesting when we're talking about building enrollment and attracting people to know that these are things available for their children.
It's a great question. And actually, in our midterm, actually, in our short-term goals, it's strength in relationships and mutual visibility. So we've already gotten to work on what does that look like, because you're right, we need to tell the community more, more, more about what's happening with these partnerships on our schools. So it's very much in the short-term goals.
Because there's a lot of things that go on, a lot of programs, a lot of opportunities. And I'm not sure everybody in the community is aware of everything that everyone could access. And as we try to build our enrollment.
Right, that's a great question.
We need to make sure that we're putting that out there, because the work's already been done.
Excellent feedback. Thank you.
President Wilson, I do have a, a follow-up from what Member McCoyn just said. I wonder if there is a place for partnerships with other schools where we have either not had the kids come to our schools to see what we offer, or families are leaving for some reason. Is that a partnership that you are looking into or are the plan?
No, but I love the idea. I think it will be one we look into now. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just one additional follow-up question. So is there a way to put a monetary value to some of the partnerships? I know from a nonprofit standpoint, we track in-kind contributions and then report out on that to be able to put a dollar value to it. It doesn't work in every case with every partnership, but in, in many cases, it, it definitely does. Have we explored that at all?
No, but that's when we talk about enhancing the audit instrument, making sure we're being as complete as we can, that's a great opportunity to do that. And to your point, I don't think it's applicable to every single one, but I think it would be applicable to a lot of them, to find the value of each. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, on to E, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes.
Yep.
We do. Thank you, sir. Sherei Patel? Sherey Patel, Ms. Patel? Just as a reminder, you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sherey Patel and I am a student at PSEP. Today, I'm here to talk about Canton High School's mascot. This has been an issue for decades now and I have been working on this for actually a year now. I have finished and created a proposal and I wanted to obviously pass this out. But I also came here because I wanted to talk about how like pressing of an issue this is. One thing I'm concerned about is that I'll submit this proposal and it'll sit there for months and it won't get looked at or it'll get ignored. And we just, I can't afford for that to happen anymore. Our board, our school board and our district, we preach ending of hate, ending of bigotry. And we can't do that when we have a mascot that's racist and is like, and it's just showing the community that that's okay and having cultural appropriation is okay. And this is why we need to change it first. I really loved, you know, like the hate reporting forum and all of the new things that the school board has done to help stop these kind of issues, but it has to start here. This issue is so, so important and it needs, and I need to see action. I know that the proposal can't get looked at until 2023 because of the policy. But I'm thinking until then, why don't we get the committee that's supposed to review it ready? We have 68 days left in the school year. Let's have everything prepared so on January 1st, we can start looking at this proposal and start making, creating change. So many students have been looking for this for years now. It's such a pressing issue and it's time that we do it. I know if it was Hindu religion or like Indian culture being appropriated in this way, I would not attend this school. And it's time that we change it. So I do have some copies of the proposal which I will pass out. And I really hope that all of you will like follow up with me and we can really start moving towards change because it has been pushed aside for like far too long now. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Fantastic. All right. No other citizens' comments. Now, any discussion items? Any follow-up discussion?
I just want to say that Member Chastain and I attended the MASB conference, the delegate assembly, which you all assigned us to. And we had a lot of, you volunteered to go.
Voluntold.
In terms of representing the district and making sure that we are aligning our work and policy to putting students first. So we had a delegate assembly Thursday night, which had a lot of policies and governance advocacy type of issues. And so Member Chastain and I had the opportunity to speak on a couple of those and, and make sure that we were sharing our recommendation and our perspective in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it was really nice to have Member Chastain there and to have PCCS represented. And then I had two days of in-depth workshops, which also is very fruitful when you think about all the districts that are out there, all the school boards that are doing the same kind of work in terms of putting students first. How they're doing that work is different, but we can learn from each other. And I really found that to be really valuable in terms of how different school districts are handling the learning loss, handling the hate issues, handling the culture wars, handling everything that is hitting districts at some degree. And so I really appreciated the opportunity. And I still haven't completely processed two full days because you go from 8:30 in the morning till 9:00 PM at night of that learning because so much does happen. But I just wanted to say that we went, we learned a lot, shared a lot. And at some point, if any of you get a chance to go, I would encourage it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Also, we have a PCCS Board of Education Community Forum happening on Thursday, October 27th. Anyone want to share a little bit on that?
Actually, we're going to talk a little bit about what this presentation is. And Dr. Liz, you are not able to attend that night, correct? So Dr. Merritt will fill in for the administration and Member Chastain and I, or Vice President Chastain. And I will be discussing this as a board, what it means to us. And when we came with this idea with aligning it to the dynamic plan, why we did that. And then, of course, we want community participation in terms of what does this mean for you? So President Wilson asked, what does meaningful partnership look like? Well, that's a question we want to ask you. So please show up. We'd love to have the community there, as many of you as possible. I will bring treats. So if that encourages you, please come on by. And it's at Erickson Elementary. So it's starting at 6:00 PM.
Fantastic. Also, I want to recognize, obviously, we're, we're one board member short. Doug Brooks is out. He had surgery, I believe. Treasurer Keough has some communication with Member Brooks.
His procedure went really well. He's, he's healing, he's back on his feet. And he said he's going to be out for at least two weeks, but he hopes to get back here as soon as possible. So he enjoys his work on the board.
And we appreciate his dedication to, to the board and to PCCS. So wishing that his recovery continues to go well. All right. Any other discussion items? All right. Well, we know we have a training tomorrow on the new superintendent evaluation tool. And follow-up board questions?
I do have a discussion item, actually. I just want to remind my fellow board members that we all committed to working on our board goals for, what was our deadline again?
That's right.
For our discussion happening.
So we're doing it in our next commit, everyone was basically taking it up in their next committee meetings. And then we would bring it, what was the date?
There's a, there's a future date, yeah. Well, anyway, we at FNO acknowledge that it's on our next agenda to have that discussion. So I just also want to remind my fellow members to be doing the same thing.
What's that?
November 10th.
November 10th.
Thank you, Patty.
So great call-out.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Don't forget to work on your board goals and committee and then bring them back on November 10th.
Okay, got it.
See what happens when I skip the president's report?
I want to say that we, in, in all of the extra stuff we had to do tonight, it was still a really well-done meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Merritt, any other follow-up board questions?
I'm trying to find the minutes from last, what I'm remembering in my head. I might see them in my written packet. Yep, please.
So we'll keep those on the list as continued updates and then that process.
And Diane, maybe one thing we can do just to make it easier for follow-up board questions? If we can just list them on the agenda moving forward and then that way we don't have to necessarily refer back to the meeting minutes. They're just right there and we'll check them off.
Yeah, I mean, they show up and they show up right in the, I mean. Yeah, it's on page 13, so.
Yeah, but we're always, we're always looking for them. So it'd be easier just to, to put them up here front and center.
They could be hyperlink.
Or a hyperlink, absolutely, either way. Yeah, hyperlink I think would be great. All right. Any other follow-up board questions, any discussion items, anything else on your guys' mind?
I think Dr. Merritt wanted to remind the community that the deadline for applications to be on subcommittees was October 28th.
It takes a village. So again, we have for all of our four board subcommittees, the application window is closing this week on the 28th. So we just want to encourage the community, if you are interested to get your name and information in. Diane Robertson is collecting that on behalf of the board. We'll then distribute that information out to each of the subcommittees so they can then discuss the process for bringing on community members. And as you've heard each board meeting, these are competitive, extremely fun, meaningful, beneficial, impactful committees. And encourage the community to have a voice in a seat at the table.
Perfect. All right, let me go out to the, to the village. Anything else? Did we miss anything? Anything else, no? All right. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:52 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.